We do have a quorum, let's say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law and here in place all agenda items on the table for discussion. What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Hanson to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the minutes. Special work session meeting of March 18th, 2019 and the regular meeting of March 18th, 2019, approve. What's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve the minutes of our last work session.
City council meeting.
Would you approve both?
Approve both.
Yeah. Motion by Councilmember Starley.
Second.
Second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. On item two, seconded by Councilmember Lundgren should be Lundberg. And then on number three, it says the motion was made by Councilmember Starley and seconded by Councilmember Starley.
A lot of them.
So, did he make the motion or did he second it, or did he do both?
I called that in today and that was fixed.
Okay. All right, other than that, I have nothing else.
With those corrections, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. It passes. Approval of the bills. Checks 100291 through 100362 totaling $2,649,136.94, approve. What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Liljegren, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion?
I'm wondering if Lori could just explain why it was over $2 million.
Yes, we received the bill from the state of Minnesota for the Highway 27 project, so our share of that project is just over 2.3 million, so that is included in the bills this time.
Thank you.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Awards, donations, presentations, and proclamations. Proclamation, National Service Recognition Day, April 3rd, 2019. Mayor Zilka.
Thanks, Mr. President. Tomorrow is Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service. This is proclamation for it. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's mayors and city councils are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs, and whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and counties, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters, and whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country bolstering the civic neighborhood and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being, and whereas in 2018, nine volunteers from our community served 5,776 hours assisting children in the Little Falls School districts, working one-on-one with students needing extra help in reading, spelling, and math skills. Those volunteers are Mary Blake, John Blom, Ellen Funk, Edna Gallus, Sister Bernita Lindstrom, Sister Carol Meckel, Dennis Bjorn, and whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with, both through their direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers, and whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars, and whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors, and whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, City of Service, and mayors across the country to recognize impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 2nd, 2019. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Gregory J. Zilka, Mayor of Little Falls, do hereby proclaim April 2nd, 2019 as National Recognition of Service Day and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, to thank those who serve and to find ways to give back to their communities, dated this first day of April, 2019. And I see we have some people here that are to be recognized, so I would like to call them up front. Tyler, I don't know if you can take a picture of that for us.
If you'd come forward, please. Thank you so much for all you do. Again, if you'll wait up here. Ellen Funk.
Thank you.
John Blom. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. If you guys will stand here for a picture. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Give a nice round of applause.
Building report, February 2019, receive. Day of Caring Participation, 2019, approve. Display of Fireworks, Dam Festival Organization Incorporated, Mill Park, approve. Police report, February 2019, receive. Policy Number 43, Library Room Usage Amendment, approve. Public Works Report, February 2019, receive. Resignation, Rick Madison, Police Department, Part-Time Patrol Officer, accept. What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I motion we accept, approve, and receive the items from the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Starley. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Public Hearings and Lettings. Lettings, Resolution 2019-21. Award, Concur Bid Public Improvement 375, Trunk Highway 27 and Adjacent Areas, Knife River North Central Division. John.
Thank you, Council President. As you can see in the resolution, we received four bids for the project. The bids include all of the state's work on the highway, so that's why they seem like they're pretty large, whereas Lori noted earlier that our contribution to the project is a little over $2.3 million. The state requires us to pay that upfront. We do intend to sell bonds to support that cost, to reimburse ourselves for that. The lowest bidder is Knife River Corporation. They came in at just over 7.5 million. I'm informed that this was pretty close, a little bit higher than the engineering estimate for the project. So, we're excited to have them. They are, they do have a local base of operations. There are some, there are local managers on this project that are very, that know our community, know our community well, have been very active and very intentional about making sure that we follow the timeline and be as aggressive as we can to get this project completed by Arts and Crafts Fair, because it is on very, many business owners and many community members' minds and interests to get that, see that project complete by that time.
What's the wish of the council?
Motion to Award Resolution 2019-21 to Knife River North Central Division.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Starley, second by Mayor Zilka. Is there any discussion? Starting in a couple, three weeks?
They're intending to break in ground at the end of this month. They will be working on doing prep work as soon as they can. Pre-con meeting tomorrow that I'll be in attendance with our engineering team to watch. I had a conversation with the manager of the project today. They're, they want to get going on as soon as they possibly can, weather permitting.
I talked to Tim O'Trumbay yesterday, no, this morning when he was in here, and he's ready to go.
Yes.
He could start tomorrow if he would, that's what he told me.
Ready, yeah.
Resolution, call or roll, please.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goschek?
Yes.
Carries.
Old Business. Amend City Council Motion of March 18th, 2019, Appointment of Logan Schuet, Seasonal Engineering Tech. Approve and amend. Lori.
Yes, at the last council meeting, Logan Schuet was hired as an engineering tech for the summer, seasonal worker. The wage that was posted in the packet was incorrect, was inadvertently missed, and so his starting wage should be 1193 per hour, per our pace scale for seasonal employees.
What's the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to amend the City Council Motion of March 18th, 2019, of the Appointment of Logan Schuet, Seasonal Engineering Tech.
Second. Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Starley. Any discussion?
I was wondering when I saw that rate. Sick and wild for an engineering tech.
That's not very good paper.
Yeah. But I didn't go to school for that when I saw that.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Ordinance Number 14, 7th Series, Rezoning Oakland Cemetery Property, Introduce 31819. John.
This is just the completion of the zoning change for the Oakland Cemetery.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance Number 14, 7th Series, Rezoning Oakland Cemetery.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Liljegren. Any discussion?
Mr. President, John, I spoke with a staff member because I know that there were some changes of what was originally requested in this and that my understanding was that the family was okay with those changes, so.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, ordinance.
Ordinance.
Sorry. Go ahead, please.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goschek?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Carries.
Interview Committee Recommendation. Appoint Michaela Payne, Payroll Administrator, Benefits Coordinator. John.
Thank you. This has been a long time coming for us. Lori and I had conversations about adding a position well over a year ago and working with staff to develop what it is that we really need, and very thankful for the council to approve and to our budget for this year and in future years, adding this position. The interview process, we received about 34 total, 32 total candidates for the application. We interviewed in our first round 10, interviewed two for a second round of interviews, and are pleased to say unanimously that Michaela was our top candidate and very excited that she accepted the position and looking to start as soon as she's able, likely towards the end of April. But she will be an excellent asset to our team. She comes with a lot of skill and knowledge and we're very excited to have her.
What's the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I move that we accept the recommendation of the Interview Committee to appoint Michaela Payne as our Payroll Administrator, Benefits Coordinator.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Big Dig Requests. Little Falls Convention and Visitors Bureau, Great River Arts Association, and others.
Mr. President, are we going to do these one at a time, or how are we going to approve these big dig requests? Item 9B, 1 through 12, can we approve them as a block?
Yes, I, Council President?
Yes.
I believe that's advisable unless there's any changes independently or any considerations that you want to make independently with these requests. We could move them as a slate for all the considerations for the temporary road closings, 1 through 12. I do want to note in the discussion, in part of the request, and I, Chris is here tonight and she can, she can answer some questions if need be, but we had a conversation with her, too. There was the request to waive fees for the event. Upon further discussion with that, we are, we have, the EDA had allocated dollars that to be used towards this project, and likely those dollars will be substantial enough to cover the fees. I think it's better, my recommendation would be that we utilize the EDA dedicated dollars to reimburse the fees related towards these events for that, rather than specifically waiving them. Just more for the consideration, too, of precedent in asking to waiving fees in the future. Notably, there's 12 of these, and each one comes with a fee. It adds up to be a lot when you're, when you're looking at 12 separate events, but individually, the event fee, permit fee isn't, isn't that significant. It's less than $100, so.
Yes, Mr. President, if I could, I would add the fact that the EDA felt it was important to help with this project for the downtown businesses because it's going to be enough of a struggle for them the way it is. So, it was unanimous at the EDA to do what they could to help the city through this process, so they're happy to do that.
This shouldn't interfere with the movement of traffic because 27 is going to be kind of closed off a lot. Did we look into if this would infringe on other people moving through town?
Yeah, Council President, and the consideration for all of the locations are in areas that won't have through traffic, that aren't being affected by the detours. You know, looking at this, they're timing the events out over the, you know, a week, each week during the time of the construction. This group has been meeting for months on coming up with this idea that those have absolutely been part of the consideration, and it's strategic about where, when they're moving them and where they're moving them to, so that, you know, part of it is to be as close to the construction as possible, so that we're attracting people into the area while the construction is going on, but being mindful that if this is the only road that people could travel through, we're not closing the only road. We're going to be putting it in an area that likely would be impacted. For example, you know, I know a couple of the areas are like First or Second Street on the southeast side of the road while Broadway is being shut down and no through traffic for Broadway. That actually makes a great location for the event because there aren't, there isn't any true through traffic, so. So, it really does fit along with what the intent for trying to host these events and create this activity is really to spur activity in our downtown area and give people a reason to come down despite the construction going on, so. So, yeah, we will avoid, it will be avoided to any of the detoured areas that are the through traffics, but try to find the target areas that no cars are going to be traveling on anyways.
Mr. President, if I may, since this has not been discussed at a previous council meeting, just kind of for informational purposes for the general public, I wonder if I could just mention what the big dig is. The big construction project on 27 this summer, Chris Von Berg from the CBB and several others, a group of people have been meeting, as John said, for months, trying to figure out how to turn this construction project into a big party. So, basically, every Thursday night, there'll be a band in a location that is not, in a location where there's construction. I mean, not in the actual construction, but where there's a road closed where you can't get through, they're putting a ban there, and just trying to get people downtown to shop, and so that the downtown businesses, who, many of them, their storefronts, won't be accessible because of the construction, try to get, to try to get people to still go and shop downtown and get them in through the back doors of these businesses and have some block parties in the back parking lots by the back doors, so people are still going downtown and shopping. And that's the whole idea behind the big dig, and a lot of work has gone into it. And one other thing, Mr. President, if I may, on page 78 of 100, in the, oh, she had filled out so many different, there's the park activity, it says free community concerts and exhibits with food and beer and wine vendors, but I believe that beer and wine is prohibited in La Bourgey Park. So, I think we need to strike that beer and wine vendors unless they get special permission to have beer and wine in La Bourgey, because no alcoholic beverages smoking allowed in La Bourgey.
I believe the understanding is, Council President, if I may, that if we authorize that, we're giving expressed authority during this event to have the alcohol for this specific event. Any of the, where there are food and beverage, and alcoholic beverage, they will be served either by a licensed caterer or that can, that can do that, provide that service, or they will have the temporary alcohol license for that, so.
Well, on the same page, one place it says beer and wine vendors, and then later it says no alcohol, so we need to strike one or the other, so it's not, so it's really clear.
I'd.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, for a suggestion, Council President?
Yes, please.
Then we would, I would suggest that you look at doing a blank slate for items 1 through 10 and 12, and then do a separate motion for item 11. That would be the park rental with the authorization for wine, for alcohol on the premise.
For that event?
For that event.
Are there two events in La Bourgey?
Yes.
Or?
13.
Oh, so 2 and 11. And move separately on those. So, items 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 12.
So, would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion, excluding 2 and 11, but to approve the big dig events, seems like they put a lot of thought into it, so I'll make that motion.
One end.
I'll second.
Striking the fees.
Yes, striking the fees also, sorry.
No.
Striking the waiver.
Striking the waiver of the fees. The fees will be paid through resources from the EDA.
Any discussion? Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Liljegren.
I have a question. When I was reading through this, is there going to be some displays and stuff that, so my question is, is there going to be any, who's going to pick and choose what can be displayed and what can't be displayed? Is there going to be any restrictions? And, you know, what is and was, what isn't going to be allowed to be displayed, and whose decision is that going to be to make that? I don't want the city to get into a big, big problem where somebody's told they're not able to display something, and we end up in court again.
Any, Council President, any displays that are incorporated on a building, we'll follow the signed ordinances of the building. The Planning Commission had addressed whether or not we should make a waiver for the signed ordinances during the, during the construction, and they decided not to engage in that activity, to leave it as is. I believe that any displays in the public right-of-way are, in the, during the closure areas, aren't subject to the same side ordinance restrictions that they are for the building. So, anything that's displayed on the buildings, we'll follow that property's sign ordinance requirements.
Any other discussion? All in favor of passing items 1 through 12, with the exception of 2 and 11? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes. And then we need to deal with items 2 and 11, which I believe we could do together. What would be the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept items 2, to approve, accept items 2 and 11 for La Bourgey Park rental and show licenses, striking the waive of the fees and allowing for alcoholic beverages.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion?
If some other organization comes in and decides they want to have alcohol there and we turn them down, what happens?
Well, we've had alcohol there before.
And we've given a special permit like this before, just for an event?
Well, we had the bikers there.
Yes.
The ballroom brought their catering license and served, so.
Have we ever denied it to any request before?
Yes, we have, because you have to have the ability to have a liquor license. You either have to have a caterer do it, or someone that can obtain a liquor license. So, for instance, if I wanted to go there and have an event, I personally cannot get a liquor license, so, so you would deny me, because I don't have the ability to get that license.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item C, Petition. Remove three-hour parking, Broadway Avenue East, Lower B's Plaza. John.
In the packet, there's the petition for the, to remove the three-hour parking signs. At this point, it's just to receive and consider the petition. No action would be taken on, on whether or not that would be removed with this motion.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to receive the petition to remove the parking signs on Broadway Avenue East at 11th Street.
That's all we need, correct? Resolution 2019.
We would need a second.
Okay, I thought we were just receiving it.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Lundberg, to receive the Resolution 2019-22. Intent to Sell Bonds, Public Improvement 375, Trunk Highway 27. Lori.
So, the resolution before you tonight would authorize the sale of bonds to cover our costs for the Highway 27 project. As we had indicated earlier, we did approve payment to the state of Minnesota tonight for just over $2.3 million. This will allow us to sell bonds when the project's complete to reimburse ourselves for those costs.
What is the wish of the council?
Motion to adopt Resolution. Motion to adopt resolution 2019-22, intent to sell the bonds for public improvement number 375.
Your second.
Second.
Motion by council member Storey, second by Mayor Zulka. Any discussion? Resolution, call or roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kusick?
Yes.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2019-30, acquisition of right-of-way easement, Troy and Jennifer Neuss. John.
These are, both this resolution and the subsequent one are completing the right-of-way easement for the airport road, 138th Street, extension.
What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I would make a motion to adopt resolution 2019-30, acquisition of right-of-way easement for Troy and Jennifer Neuss.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zulka, second by council member Storey. Is there any discussion? Resolution, call or roll, please.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kusick?
Yes.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2019-31, acquisition of right-of-way easement, Rita Richner. What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2019-31, acquisition of right-of-way easement for Rita Richner.
Second.
Motion by council member Gosick, second by council member Hanson. Is there any discussion? Resolution, call or roll, please.
Storey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kusick?
Yes.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Carries.
Temporary occupancy permit, BNSF Railway wastewater project. Lori.
Yes, as a part of our wastewater treatment facility project and the expansion out there, we are going to have to encroach on the railroad right-of-way property. Try and say that past three times. The cost for Burlington Northern would require us to obtain a temporary occupancy permit. The cost of that permit is $5,000. In addition to that, we are required to have railroad protective liability insurance. The cost of that is an additional $923. So we're requesting the council approve the application to the railway and the fees associated with that.
What's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve that temporary occupancy permit for the BNSF Railroad for our wastewater project.
Your second.
I'll second that.
Motion by council member Storey, second by council member Gosick. Any discussion?
Well, here we go again with the railroad. It sure is nice that they can be, you know, a good neighbor.
Can we defer our payment like they do there?
$5,000 to rent something when we just paid $2,400 to buy a piece of land for easement.
This is almost more irritating than the crossing fees.
Almost.
We don't have much choice though, do we?
No, we don't.
No choice at all.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Policy number 33, Heritage Preservation Commission Rehab Construction, amend. John.
So this is a policy associated with the small cell wireless movements that are happening in the upcoming 5G world. Their, the cellular providers are, in order to accommodate that, they need to put devices in a lot of locations. They're going to be smaller, you're not going to see the massive towers like you do along the highways, but a lot of smaller boxes and incorporating them into more densely populated areas. So we have in our right-of-way ordinances authorized that we can modify policies to address issues like this. So within our Heritage Preservation Commission, so within our historic downtown, we have our historic streetlights and there's a lot of concern of whether or not Verizon's or AT&amp;Ts and those can come in and apply for permits and put the small cells up because the state and their lobbying groups have given them authority to do that. Ours, the importance of passing this policy is so that we can require them to meet a certain aesthetic so that we, that instead of putting any sort of box on there, onto these light poles that we've invested a lot of money into and to try to, you know, build a historic look to our downtown, look and feel to our downtown, that they don't then just slap a gray, big gray box on the side to do the, to do the small cell. So this is to authorize us to be able to regulate that, provide guidelines to those small cells, systems, and make sure that we have some control in meeting the aesthetic standards that we, that we've invested in, in our historic downtown.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion, policy number 33, Heritage Preservation Commission Rehab Construction.
I'll second that.
Motion by council member Liljagren, second by council member Lundberg. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? City council reports on city authorities, boards, bureaus, commissions, and committees.
I have one, Mr. President. It's been, I'd like to know what's the policy for broadcasting our work sessions. It's been requested that that be done. We just put a bunch of money into brand-new HD equipment. I don't know why we're not doing it currently.
Mr. President, if I could, address, we don't broadcast them now or we never have broadcast them and so in my mind, we would have to have that discussion whether or not we want to and you'll hear a lot of, you'll hear some pros, but you'll hear a lot of cons. In fact, we're not required to have public comment. We do that to give the public the right to have a voice in decisions we make, so.
But wouldn't it also be a right of us citizens to be able to see the concerns of those individuals when they're before here?
It's an open meeting for them to come to if they'd like to hear that.
That's what the lies, open meeting.
This, council president, the standard isn't, or the minimum expectation isn't that we have to broadcast, record. We are live streaming this meeting because we do have the capabilities of doing that now. It's not the standard, or the state doesn't mandate that we do that. We've had the system, it was improved, we made the investment to improve the system. So it isn't something that the state says, oh, you have to, because you have a public access channel, you have to record your council meetings. That absolutely isn't the case. There's a lot of small cities that have public access channels that don't have the capabilities of doing that. So it's just, it'd be a matter of procedure and whether or not the council would be willing to take that on. I didn't make the decision to do that independently tonight, so it was something that, this being the first meeting that we had it up and running, that we could do that, I wanted to, I think it would be important that the council would be able to make that decision, so.
We can discuss it at an upcoming work session. Anyone else?
constituent complaint, Mr. President?
Yes, we didn't have time before, so go ahead.
I had some complaints of the trash haulers not picking up trash because the lid was not completely closed. It was open six inches with a little bag sticking up and they refused to take the trash. So I think that they should take the trash, but it wasn't overflowing, it just wasn't completely closed. Anyway, people not happy about that.
I heard concerns.
In there and jump up and down.
Pack it down.
Then it doesn't come out. I tried that. I understand their concern though because what are they going to do? Get out with a tape measure and if you allow six inches, pretty soon it's 12 inches and then it goes on. They have to have a standard and they usually go by it.
The hauler I had before I was annexed into the city, if it was sitting on top of the can, even if the lid was flipped back, they'd pick it up and take it.
I don't think they, I've seen them in action and I haven't talked to this particular vendor, but I did watch out the window as they stopped at my neighbor's house and the driver took a picture. So what I suspect happened was he snapped a picture of the can and then talked to the owners and said, am I picking this up or not? And he popped out of the truck with a little tag and they put it on the can and down the road he went. So, you know, it's not a.
You know, take the trash and then leave a can, leave a, leave a little tag on there for next time.
Policy is you have your lid closed.
Good faith.
Anyone else? Any announcements? We'll adjourn immediately. 8:11.